Please just remain standing and think of all of the families and the tragedy that occurred in Dayton, Ohio, and El Paso, Texas. Thank you. May I have a seat? Okay. Welcome to the Village Board meeting, Monday, August 5th. There will be no workshop meeting held in August for the September meeting. Is that what we agreed upon? Is that correct, Board?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And the next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees is September 3rd, but that's the day after Labor Day. Does anyone have a preference to rescheduling the meeting?
No. That day's fine for me. We should also know that it's the night before school starts.
Which is Tuesday's the 3rd, the night before school also? Okay. And it's the day after Labor Day and the long weekend. So I'll make a suggestion for moving the meeting for September 9th.
Yeah. Do you? Okay.
Good. Okay. So let's tentatively change the meeting date to September 9th at 7:00 PM. Fire Department Chief Lapori, first man up.
Good evening. Only a couple of things tonight. Update on the Truck Committee. We just got the specs back, I believe, last Thursday. So the committee's reviewing them. We're going to have a meeting end of the week, hopefully by next month. I'm hoping to present them to the Board as long as everything goes okay. Sometimes it takes a little longer to get them back from the factory than we'd like, but...
Okay.
We'd like to have, do our annual water rescue drill at the quarry.
And what is the date on that?
It would be the 19th, August 19th.
Did you have any discussion with the town of Ramapo?
Yeah, I talked to the guy in charge up there, Tom Sullivan, and the other ones. We already notified them. So it's up, as long as you give us the blessing, we can get the insurance and give it to them and it'd be okay.
That's what he's requiring? That's what they're requesting?
Yeah, they require an insurance certificate.
Right. So that we have something that you could provide to my office and then we could satisfy that?
Okay. What do you need?
Something in writing, whatever you need. What do you need?
Usually we just go to the clerk and get it. And we just have to make insurance.
Just the insurance?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion for the Suffering Fire Department to hold the annual water rescue drill at the quarry?
Motion.
Motion Trustee Hagan?
Second.
Second, Trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I was just wondering if there was any progress with the mutual aid agreement with Allendale? If that went anywhere or what happened with it?
That's something that's still under discussion and I'll be working with the mayor on that.
Okay. And just a point of information, just a reminder that the Rockland County Parade is going to be held in the Village September 7th. Parade starts at 2:00.
Right. You know, are you working with anyone in particular with...
The parade committee, I know they met with...
Right. Chief Oswin?
Chief here.
Right.
They've been doing all the work on it, you know, I let them kind of handle it.
Yeah, I'm entangled in it somehow, too. I'm trying. I'm working on getting the stage. Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds great. Yeah, we're looking forward to it.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathy Mills, Culture and Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Village Board. So a few things that we have coming up. Today, Midget Mountie's football season began today at the ball fields. So that's the cheerleaders and the football team practicing down at the fields. Coming up this coming weekend, on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, is Sunday like a rain day for the softball?
Sunday is championship.
Championship, okay.
Or a rain day.
So the karate softball tournament will be this weekend, the 8th, 9th, 10th, and 11th, down at the ball field. So we're hoping people come down and support them. Moving in the park, we are showing Wonder Park in the Avon Park will be on Friday, August 16th. We have the dedication of the Dave Clifford Memorial Park on August 18th at 1:00 PM. Naloxin Training will be Tuesday, August 27th, 6:30 here in Village Hall. And then, believe it or not, we're looking already at the pool closing. It will be closing on Labor Day, September 2nd at 6:00 PM. And then just some events that are coming up in September, like Mike had mentioned, the Fireman's Parade on September 7th. Dog Day with the Lions Club, Frank Hagan and the Lions Club will be on September 14th. The Midget Mountie Bonfire will be on Saturday, September 14th as well. The Street Fair is Sunday, September 15th. And then Suffering Day is Saturday, September 21st. We have the all-day activities starting at 11 to 3:00. And then the evening entertainment with fireworks and music, starting at 6:30 in the evening. So it's going to be a nice finish this summer and right into the month of September. And then for discussion, a few things that I have to talk about for Clifford Theater. Mayor, do you need me to go through?
No, I have all the resolutions. I'll go over them now with you, but let's also, and I know we're not going to forget this, the 9/11 ceremony for the September events. I know that's one of our bigger ones. We'll have some further discussion on that also. And then moving forward, we have the Clifford Theater. Let me do them in the order I have them. First, so I'll start off with the appointing of Dylan Salmon as laborer at the Suffering Memorial Pool at a pay rate of $10 an hour, effective July 31st, non pro tunc. Do I have a motion? That's a replacement laborer. Our other laborer left and returned to school.
Will be.
Will be.
When he goes, then they'll be taken.
Right. So this is just a replacement for that laborer. Have a motion?
Motion.
Motion Trustee Hertzman, second?
Second.
Trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Kathy, does that keep us with two laborers at the pool?
Yes, it will. Yep.
Next resolution, authorizing Anta Cola to serve as the Clifford Theater 2019 Summer Program Director at the cost of $2,200, non pro tunc. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hagan, do I have a second? Mrs. Hertzman, Trustee Hertzman, all in favor?
Aye.
Next resolution, authorizing Mary Guccione to serve as the Clifford Theater Summer Program Assistant Director at a rate of $1,100, non pro tunc. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hagan, second?
Second.
Trustee Hertzman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have the next resolution, authorizing Helen Conrad to serve as the Musical Director for the 2019 Summer Clifford Theater Program at a director's cost of $1,100. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hagan, do I have a second?
Motion.
Trustee Albert on a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Kathy, all of these three line items, they were budgeted for at these dollar amounts, correct?
Yes, they were. Yes.
I don't have that one. Do I have it?
It says motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Next, I have the motion authorizing the purchase of $54.79 tickets to see Tootsie on Broadway on November 23rd, along with authorization to reserve a bus for that date. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion Trustee Hagan, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Albert, do I have any discussion? Kathy?
Discussion?
Do you have anything to add to the...
We are going to sell them at a rate of $99. So the ticket's $79, and then for the bus, we add on $15 to $20. So we are not going to lose any money on this event. We never do, thank goodness.
Right.
It's no cost to the Village, it's just an even wash.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. Any other discussion?
In the past, I just have a question. In the past, we always sell out, right?
We've always, as far as I've been here, yes, we've always sold out. And this one, actually, we get two tickets for Chaperones. They're giving it to us, so the price of the show is very reasonable for us to go down. This is just opening up. Tootsie's just got through reviews, so I think this one will sell out very quickly as well.
Great. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Let me think, Guccione, we did Helen, we did all of these, right?
Kathy, if I could ask you, how are we doing with the donations for Suffering Day?
The donations, Nancy's been collecting them in. We've heard from probably about 80% of the ones that we've gotten out, too. The dollar amount, I'd have to check on, but we've heard from almost everybody and we're getting a very nice response. Good Samaritan Hospital gave a very nice donation this year. We're looking to get a donation from Walmart. We just have to go through the series of going through the computer, but it's been going very well. So we have a healthy...
So do you think that this year we'll be able to cover the expense of the Suffering Day? I know usually we do cover the expense, but I think it was last year, it fell short?
No, we never fell short. Never fell short. We made exactly what we had in our, I'm trying to say the right word.
I feel like I remember something about like $3,000 that we had to transfer in.
No, that wasn't a transfer. Mike, do you want to explain?
The way the Suffering Day works is we collect the funds and whatever the expenses are, they're paid out. In some years, there's more money left over that just sits there until it can be applied to the fund.
Okay.
Last year, we had a small amount left in that fund. So we're hoping that whatever donations come in, we'll cover it.
Oh, okay.
I think there was something in range of $425.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
So yeah, we're very fortunate that we've got a lot of great sponsors and they do donate to Suffering Day. So that is one of our, you know, tasks, when we start to see what has come in and what we're able to purchase. But it only goes as a separate account for Suffering Day, so we're very cautious of what we're using the money out of.
And I think last year, we had a little difficulty with the truck, with the tunnels.
With the which truck?
Did we have a truck, did we have a problem with the fireworks truck?
Getting under the Chestnut Street.
Oh, yes.
Yes. So can we make sure that we give them alternate...
Yes. I will talk to them again, yes. I almost forgot about that. Yes, they will be talked to again about that.
And do we know the status of the stage?
No, the mayor, if we can talk about that, are we going to look at Clarkstown? I know last time we talked, we were going to see if we can request...
It's very challenging to get anybody, any town to donate a stage. We're working on it currently.
Yeah, okay.
Working on it for the Fire Department and then Suffering Day.
Yeah, so I haven't, so not yet, as of yet.
The stage last year came from where?
Stony Point. I kept going close. Stony Point, we used it. They donated the stage, but we had to pay for the staffing, their staffing, to be there. So that's how that worked out.
And the one that was up for bid, I know they removed it, but do you know anything more about that?
Oh, I thought I sent an email to everybody. The Clarkstown stage?
Yeah, it was broken and then they were going to try and make repairs.
They're going to keep it. They're not giving it out. They're not going to, unless it's changed. They're not looking to sell it at this point.
Okay.
Yeah. That was very unfortunate. I was disappointed in that.
The costs you mentioned last year that were incurred to run the stage, that you had to pay the Stony Point, are those sort of costs included in what, you know, the expenses or is that additional expenses?
This, for us, is going to be a big change. Last year, we hadn't intended it. We ended up being able to cover it, but in the past, we would get it free from the town of Ramapo. So that is a big expense for Suffering Day.
But it was still within the amount that was donated. And also, what about any overtime that's generated for Village employees to help with that?
Suffering Day typically does have weekend workers, so they do, we do incur overtime. The recreation doesn't. I'm not sure about the other departments, how much and what they're putting in.
So those additional overtime amounts are not considered as part of like what the donations cover? In other words, that's additional expenses?
That would be additional. Staffing would be additional.
Additional expenses.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just making sure I understand the cost, the true cost.
Yep.
And the town of Ramapo, why don't they loan it to...
They sold their stage. They sold it before we all knew about it. So unfortunately, we didn't even get a chance to get it, so they don't even have one anymore.
They don't have a stage at all anymore?
Not that I know of, unless they've bought one, but I haven't seen any out. So I don't know if they have one at this point. I don't know.
Do you think, could you reach out to the recreation?
They have a stage, it's at Boulder Stadium, the whole stadium.
Yeah.
So really, that's what they use.
Yeah.
They use, all their events are at the stadium.
Yeah. So I can, I can look, we're going to look around, but Mayor, I guess we can...
Yeah, I'm still, I'm looking also.
Yeah.
So I'll probably have an update for you tomorrow on that.
Got it. And I think that's it. For those of you that came to Clifford Theater this weekend, it was fabulous. We had four fantastic shows. Almost every seat was sold out. It was a really wonderful experience.
It was great, even Thursday night.
Yeah. Yeah, you saw it Thursday, and it was like that, except for a couple of seats in between. It was fantastic. It was fantastic.
It really was. It was unbelievable.
It really was.
The kids are so talented and then the director and the assistant and the music director, really, and the kids overall were unbelievable.
It was a fabulous day, yeah. Really, it really was a couple of days. It was a really great experience. So thank you, Board, for continuing to support that. Clifford Theater is going into its 30th year next year, so I know that could be a big year next year. So we're very proud of that program. It's really great.
Okay.
And that, I think, is it.
Can I bring up one idea for October?
Okay.
And maybe it could be worked in conjunction with Frank's Lions Club Dog Day?
Right.
On whether we could have a pep parade, a Halloween pep parade in conjunction with the other Halloween festivities we have?
Are you thinking during the Halloween parade itself?
Yeah, like what time does that go off?
2:00.
2:00. Yeah. Maybe something...
Not during the parade.
Well, I don't know. Could they lead off the parade or follow up behind the parade? I don't know.
Let's talk about it.
Yeah, maybe you could research, you know, some other villages and towns, because there's plenty of them that actually do it. See if they do it in conjunction or whether it's just a separate event.
Okay. We could talk about it. Okay.
You know, I think that's a pretty painless event and I think there's a lot of dog owners that they love dressing up their pets. I know, you know, I live in the Knolls, so I'm a big drop-off area for trick-or-treaters. And there's always dogs dressed up, part of the festivities.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
My dog will not be in the parade. I don't have one, I'm sorry. How about like moving forward on the Chalk Festival or...
We haven't looked at that. We can look at it again. It's a nice fall event.
Yeah.
I know we were talking at the Art in the Park, the idea of maybe doing in the park with the squares. So we could certainly pick that up. We could look at it.
Or even doing Art in the Park again and the Chalk Fest. So let's talk about a couple more activities for the fall.
Okay. That sounds like a plan. Thank you, everybody.
Did we ever, Kathy, did we ever look into like possibly renting a stage from somewhere? I don't know, I don't know how costly it would be.
We haven't, because up until very recently, I thought we were getting the Clarkstown stage, so we're going to have to, we have to look at something.
If we don't get a stage, what could we do?
You know, it's a tricky thing, because we need a back to it because of the performers that are on, like the Karate Kids and the dancers. And so we have used, like at the parades, we've used the trucks, you know, like the flatbeds, but I don't know if I would trust just a flatbed with no back to it. So I think the optimal thing would be a stage, but I haven't gotten, I've been a little busy with Clifford recently, so I think we can look into doing a stage again.
Right. Maybe we could look into building a platform or something along... Yes, Mr. Gennettino.
Platform, the second year, we can get a stage, the second year of Suffering Day.
Right.
And we rented platforms.
Oh, you've rented platforms.
No back. No back.
No what?
No back.
Back to it.
Oh.
You can probably get a DPW or something for the weight.
Like this?
Yeah, a railing.
Or railing or something.
Mr. Paul Graham.
Curtains or something like that. So let's keep that in mind. If we don't get a stage, you know, we have to have something to fall back on.
Certainly.
Not fall back on, but you know what I mean.
I do actually know the owner of a sound production company.
Okay.
I could reach out to them.
If you could, I appreciate it.
They're on vacation this week.
Okay.
But I could reach out to them and see if they could help us out.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you. We have on the agenda tonight, discussion on the Little League planned renovations for Velardi Field. And tonight, Mr. Barry Dane is here. Mr. Dane, if you would like to present to the Board.
Sure. Hi, how are you? My name is Barry Dane. I'm a Suffering resident for 19 years, volunteer for Suffering Little League for 14 years and the current Little League president for two years. Suffering Little League represents one of the largest volunteer organizations in the village with over 900 registered members. Suffering Little League, over the past 30 years, has invested over $2 million into the vitalization of Kukulo Field, Vincent Karate Memorial Field, Horton Field, and the Velardi Field. Through the efforts of my family and other families, such as the Fazio family, Curly's, Janito, Poppy, Ellsworth, to name a few, we have made the Suffering Little League Complex a premier destination for all youth recreational baseball in Rockland County and beyond. We have counties coming for various tournaments throughout the year. For your consideration, I have given you a proposal for the renovation of the Velardi Field, which has come under disrepair over the years and is in desperate need of renovation. Over the past six years, we have renovated the Kukulo Field to a pristine manner. We have also renovated the Vincent Karate Memorial Field to one of the finest softball multipurpose fields in the county. So not only does it provide recreational baseball for young adults from 15 to 18 and older, we provide recreational baseball to Little League and intermediate leagues and to softball as well. So we would like to move forward with this proposal for the 2020 season, so we can continue to provide a premier league for our youth in the Village of Suffering.
When do you propose this work to be started?
Like it done, started yesterday, Mayor. Ideally, we'd like to have this completed by spring of 2020. So if we can start it in the fall, that would be ideal. If we have to wait till spring to go through all the proposal, I know there is still some work that needs to be done. If this initial proposal is approved, I have to show the DPW, you know, plan and, you know, the clean soil sample and all that stuff, so...
Is this a similar renovation to Velardi that we did in karate?
Exactly. Not karate. Karate is fully skinned, meaning no grass. So it's very similar to what we did in Kukulo about four years ago, five years ago. It's really replace, really, if you look at, and I've shown you the condition of the Velardi Field at times, and what it does, it's removing all the current sod, replacing new sod, putting in a sprinkler system, and putting in state-of-the-art dirt or turf, if you will. It's the same stuff that's used at Yankee Stadium and Shea Stadium or City Field, I should say. But it's, right now, the Velardi Field is becoming unsafe and dangerous for our children. So we want to get that squared away.
Okay.
Okay. Secondly, I've submitted an agreement. This is something that I've been working on with the Village Attorney and the Mayor. And really, it's come out of necessity due to the changing times, if you will. Suffering Little League has always worked alongside the Village DPW and the Water Department and the Village as a whole to do work and vitalize the complex itself. Over the years, it seems that the DPW has felt threatened by our efforts and the current DPW person, Joe Hunt, has at multiple occasions asked me and kicked me off the field, called the police, to stop me from, or any other league members from volunteering their time and trying to vitalize the various fields. His assertion is that we are taking work away from the union members. I have yet to see what work or what work we have taken away from the Village after all these years.
Right. I think, Mr. Dane, this discussion that you're leading into, I think we should be discussed amongst...
Well, this discussion is pertinent to the agreement that I presented to the Board of Trustees here.
Okay.
Okay? So I felt that they should have a background as to why they have been given this agreement that we've been working on. And the Mayor and I...
But I wouldn't want to go move forward to singling out any individual and to hampering any repairs to the field as you're doing. And I believe that, as I was at the field on one of the days, on one of the occasions, that that discussion should remain within the office and we will review the memorandum of understanding.
And what's our timeframe for that? Because we've been, we're trying to work on this for about four years now.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Yes.
It seems to be, let me defer to the legal counsel to speak to some of the points of the memorandum.
It's certainly something that I will be reviewing with the Board of Trustees and the Mayor. It's something that I've had discussions with the Mayor about already over the last few weeks. When we met some time ago, the agreement, as I indicated at that point in time, was written from the perspective of the Little League. The Village is the owner of the premises, so there's certain things that need to be taken into account and revisions that need to be made from that perspective. I am new to the Village, so I needed to take some time to do some due diligence in terms of understanding the history of the relationship between the Little League and the Village, along with getting an understanding of the perspective of the DPW and others involved as to the Village operations on the field. So I've been in the process of doing all of that. My hope is to now review with the Board of Trustees the proposed agreement and discuss with them terms and revisions. You know, it's something that I'd like to see a revised agreement coming back to you to you folks within the next three weeks, four weeks, somewhere in that area.
We do share that same mutual goal that's indicated in here.
Well, we share it.
Providing the baseball and so forth and services for the youth.
Certainly share it, but it's been delayed for some time now.
Yes.
And, uh, you know, going forward, we just want to have a situation where, uh, volunteers aren't being thrown off the field, that they've invested their time, money, and energy in vitalizing.
I, I think the one, the one thing, while I understand, uh, the perspective of the Little League and those concerns, um, in the due diligence that, that I'm doing, I'm hearing equal concerns, uh, from the DPW and its staff members in terms of, uh, their operations and the things that they need to do from, from the field, so...
Agreed. Never interfere. Never.
So there's, there's those areas that we need to, to navigate and what I don't want to do on behalf of the village is enter, have the, the Board of Trustees and the mayor enter into an agreement, uh, with the Little League that ends up, um, resulting in, in unintended consequences like litigation or improper practice charges on behalf of union members against the village. So this needs to be carefully looked at and, and examined and done in the right way.
Okay, and we've been trying to do that for some time. I'm just trying to move this process forward a little bit.
We're going to step it up.
Yeah. Please.
Okay.
I have a question about the conditions that, that are causing this to be required in the first place. Is this like sort of just an ongoing normal, uh, you know, things falling into disrepair from normal time and use? Or is this neglect or some other, I'm just trying to understand?
It's time and use, so, um, and, uh, and improper maintenance. So, uh, right, so the Suffolk Little League has taken on the investment of a $20,000 turf machine, which can effectively manage the turf in a manner that is, uh, appropriate. Okay? So what's happened over time is that the current turf machines and personnel using that turf machines, uh, create ruts and divots and, um, pushes the clay outward into the field, creating, you know, uh, small craters. So, um, that's why it's time to put a new field in.
So if that's happening, using this specialized equipment that, you know, I'll be the first to say I'm not too familiar with, what's to prevent that from happening shortly after the, you know, work would be done if such work is moved, moves forward and is done?
Well, essentially, what the league has done, um, has in a vitalization program is to, uh, they've installed lights and, and have redone all the fields. So now, as we create these new fields, uh, we are on a maintenance program with our current vendor and they come on an annual basis and tune us up. So, um, and after about three to five years, a small lip occurs along the grass. So now we are in a, in a process that every three to five years, we cut that lip out, replace it with new sod to avoid what's happened over time. Okay?
So in other words, in your opinion, if, moving forward, if such, you know, work and scope as described here were to be done, it would be less likely to fall into a similar level of disrepair?
That's correct. So what's happened is we've been unable to do the work we've previously done on Velati Field over the past five years and we can see the results of it. So, and currently, I don't know, I haven't been to Horton, but about two weeks ago, it was overgrown with grass. The, the turf was not raked or, and, because we're not allowed to do that work. So this is why we have the agreement. So we're not, we don't want to take the work away. We never have. We've always worked in conjunction with the village and, and this is what the hope of this agreement does for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tishna, can you provide us with an update on 27 Hillside?
As I spoke with Rob today, um, there are more, Teresa had the violations printed out today. They should have been mailed out. Um, Rob was, Rob approved all of them, so...
Violations for?
For Hill, for Hillside you're talking about, right?
Oh, okay, for Hillside, okay.
Yeah, we sent, I believe, three additional ones. They went in the mail today. Should be there by the end of the week.
Where, where do they go in the mail? To that address?
Sorry?
What address are they mailed to?
To his, that's where he lives.
But he's not allowed to be at that address? So he doesn't live there?
Yeah, yeah, he's allowed there. The, the Board of Health, the Board of Health deemed it livable.
Oh, is that correct?
It's the last, the last I was aware.
Not in the House. So Mr. Anzo, uh, 27 Hillside avoided public auction by filing for bankruptcy. Is that correct? Um, 27 Hillside's bankruptcy case is in the process. He missed several court appearances and he has failed to provide information regarding his debt. The, uh, Health Department held a formal hearing against 27 Hillside for hoarding issues related to back, to the backyard as well as neglect to the house. Rockland County Department of Health sought fines in the sum of $4,875. The case has not yet been presented to the Commissioner of Health for a final determination. Then the county did obtain a court order to vacate the house and, uh, 27 Hillside vacated the house at the time. Rockland County Department of Health is preparing to send a referral to the Rockland County Law Department to obtain a court order preventing him from accessing the entire property now.
Right, okay, so he, he's still...
He can access the property. He can pick up his mail.
He can pick up his mail.
But he cannot inhabit the premise.
Yeah, he's still allowed there and he's still there.
That's what I just wanted to understand, if he's able to receive that mail?
Yes.
Or if they should be using another address to get it to him? That's my concern.
Um, so again, he, he should be getting them by the end of the week now. Again, Mayor, as you know, it's, he probably won't show up, which will turn into a, um, first it'll go out to a letter warrant unless the judge decides that he's already not showing up enough and just goes right to a, right to a, uh, warrant. Um, in addition, Mayor, um, the, the Pro Cut lawns and landscaping?
Right.
I was able to complete those today.
Okay.
They're in with Rob. He has them, uh, he was in court, I believe, all day, so he didn't get a chance to review them. With our program, I was able to put, I was able to put them in as the current contractor of record.
All right, so let me just update the board a little bit and the public here on in regards to the Pro Cut summonses was that they had a road open, and you guys can correct me if I remember wrong, they had like a road opening permit on Chestnut Street and Lafayette Avenue, which caused a major disruption to traffic flow and violated certain codes and provisions in the village of Suffolk Code.
Correct.
And we are pursuing violations.
Six.
Six violations.
Six violations, um, multiple different codes. Charles, uh, came up with a, a total in which they owe us. That's of course not going to be in the violation. Um, I believe Rob's going to want to go right to a court appearance ticket on this. I just have to wait to hear that from him.
Okay.
Um, it, it is the type of thing that we can proceed right to a court appearance ticket. I'm sure he'll want to, but I just didn't get the okay.
Okay.
I'll keep you posted tomorrow.
Great. All right, thank you. No. Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Chief Osborne from the Police Department, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Board. Just a quick update. I just have one item voting on tonight and that is I'm asking the Board to accept the resignation of part-time Police Officer Laura Gannon effective August 6th, 2019. She, uh, got a full-time police job. Oh, yes, she left us. Her good officer.
Congratulations to her.
Resignation.
So I have the resolution accepting the resignation of Laura Gannon effective August 6th, 2019. Do I have a, uh, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hagan, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Alpert, any discussion?
Um, yeah, is, uh, are you going to be replacing, um, uh, Officer Gannon?
Steve, that is the position that we, we're going to be giving up under the budget.
Okay.
You have to give up a police position, that's going to be the one.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you.
Well, problem at all, thank you, thank you, Board. Just a quick update, um, a little bit busy down in this month. Last week, I think I spoke to pretty much every one of you in regards to this. We had a, uh, a pretty good drug raid, I guess a pretty large drug raid in West Maple Avenue. We worked, we were, uh, working with the Department of Homeland Security Investigation Unit, which I, we really never worked with, in regards to a location in the village that was having, uh, a lot of prescription drugs shipped to it. And not to get too into the case, but there was a, uh, package intercepted by U.S. Department of Homeland Security. We started working with them, identified the people in there and after an extensive investigation with the Rockland County Intel Unit and Homeland Security, we ended up, uh, doing surveillance and we were able to get a search warrant from the District Attorney's Office, conducted a raid last Monday, and we came out with over 2,000 prescription pills out of that location, took one person in custody, uh, obviously in custody and facing multiple charges. So, uh, the officers did a great job. It was really run by Detective Sergeant Marsh and Officer York who's assigned to the Intel Unit. Just a good location. That's the second location we've taken off in the last, what, six months. The other one on Wayne Avenue and on a good note, the location on Wayne Avenue where the dealing was taking place about six months ago is been vacated at this point. We have had no neighbor complaints and the neighbors are ecstatic that the people that were responsible for the dealing are on their way somewhat. So, uh, that's a good note. That's something good. I think we conducted, that was a good investigation, uh, tense, but we took care of business. I thank you for the support on that. We are now in the midst of our step enforcement. It's basically aggressive driving enforcement. Step stands for Selective Traffic Enforcement Program is run by the Governor's Sa- Traffic Safety Committee and the Governor's Traffic Safety Office gives us grants to send officers out specifically for certain enforcement. We've been really hitting hard on speed enforcement this week and today, or should say this today, last weekend, today, but today we issued over 20 speeding summers on Route 202 alone between 7:00 AM, it was, I'm sorry, between 11:00 AM and just a few hours ago was the last stop. I stopped up and checked any officers. Over 20 today. We're going to continue that to heavily enforce, which we do, but 202 is a main cut through road and it is a speedway and we are looking at every possible option to slow people down for the safety of everybody out there. So we're hitting that hard and we're going to continue to do that into the future. We had 837 police calls and plotters for the month of July. It was definitely a busy month downstairs. We have a lot going on the community front. Dale Hockey opens up September 14th. Frank, we're working again with you guys with the, the dog event. We have a barbecue for everybody and it's, it's great because we have all the kids at the...
Are you serving hot dogs?
Hot dogs, yes. Hot dog, Ed Hamburg, yes. So we're set. Frank sends a good contingency over with all the people we have there, the residents, the kids coming over. It's great for everybody. It's a great day. We also are participating in several events. This month, we have the street fair coming up. We'll be set up with our booth and obviously our security, um, we'll be doing our security patrols as well. We're participating with Kathy and we thank her for working with us with Suffolk Day and the fireman's parade. I have met once with the committee last Monday night. I'll be meeting again next Tuesday night with the fireplace to go over some logistics. It's a rather large parade with over 30 fire departments, so we're going to be closing on several side streets, the main street, and we're setting up closures and detours and obviously security and safety as well. So that's pretty big undertaking, but the fire department is great to work with, what they do for our community. And, uh, that's pretty much all I have unless there's any questions from the Board. Okay?
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, man.
Thank Sergeant Marsh and Detective, uh, Officer York, I slipped there.
Yeah, I'd like to recall, yeah, it's Officer York there, so...
On a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Can I get a copy of the, the letter that you were reading from, from the Health Department to put in the file for Hillside?
Yes, it's on by tomorrow, yeah.
I'll get that, thank you.
Mr. Rela.
What is this?
Thank you.
Is this different than what we had? Oh, wait a minute. It's a little different.
We were awarded $125,000 for a new backhoe, which is a replacement backhoe for the water department. And, uh, that was sponsored by Ellen Jaffe and it's through the State Municipal Facilities Program. So, uh, the initial paperwork to start the contract was submitted, uh, this week, uh, mailed to them. So it'll probably be about two months before the final contract is actually sent back to us and executed and then we can go ahead and actually purchase the backhoe. Uh, the total cost of the backhoe is 125 and the grant is for 125. It's a reimbursement grant, so it will be a wash, which is good.
Very good.
At 3 o'clock this afternoon, um, speaking of Ellen Jaffe, her Chief of Staff, uh, Rose Leander, uh, sent out, uh, an email to all of the municipalities within her district stating that, uh, she's going to be sponsoring additional state municipal facility grant opportunities and she needs to have the applications in by Wednesday.
This Wednesday?
Yeah, this Wednesday. So, uh, that's like 36 hours, you know, 48 hours. Uh, so, uh, I'll be working with our top staff here and pulling something together, uh, for that to make sure that we, uh, are awarded some funds. And it is competitive, you know, with the other municipalities, so. Finally, uh, we have a grant, uh, opportunity with the Environmental Facilities Corp. And this grant is for, uh, the sewer project, which is right now estimated at a cost of $9 million, the sewer upgrade project, okay? And this grant will, can potentially give us a 25% of the cost of the sewer project, which is 2.25 million, and also can afford us low interest financing, which is a significant savings over 30 years, approximately, 25, 25 years. Um, and what you have before you is the agenda, I mean, not the agenda, the resolution such that the application can be submitted. Initially, what was given to you was, um, a resolution that if we weren't going for the low interest financing and, uh, didn't have the bond resolution, uh, we would have needed the longer resolution, but this is a much more concise and shorter resolution. Uh, and it basically replicates the resolution from last year when we, when we put in for the same opportunity. Once again, what's also in your packet, uh, that Amy had put together along with, uh, Kathy, was last year's resolution.
Mm-hmm.
So you can see last year's resolution. This year's resolution is just updated. So last year's was suffice for the application and passed.
Okay, so the resolution that you just handed out.
Right.
Okay.
So that's going to replace the one Amy did, right?
It's going to replace both resolutions which were in your packet?
Both resolutions?
Both of them, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, both of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I was getting. We saw the infrastructure.
Basically, the resolution says that, uh, that the Board authorizes us to submit the application, that, uh, our Treasurer, Michael Janito, can sign, uh, the application in any documents, uh, which they usually want from documents afterwards, particularly on the financial end. And, uh, once again, the application is due September 13th.
Okay, so I have the, I have the resolution authorizing submission of grant application available through the Environmental Facilities Corporation under the New York, New York Water Infrastructure Improvement Act. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Hertzmann, second. Trustee Alpert?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, so what if whatever expenses don't come to this $9 million that is bandied about here?
What was the question?
In other words, you're applying for a grant?
Right.
That you've said is towards potentially a, a 25% grant of, based on a $9 million project.
Right.
What if the project is not $9 million?
It's, yeah, if it's, if it's 7 million, 7...
Let's say, whatever, whatever the number may be, is it 25% of no matter what the number is or is it 2.25 million, whatever you said, no matter what? You know, I just want to understand that a little better.
Uh, no, right now, the, the max is the $9 million times the 25%, right? I, I don't know.
But if it wanders... I'm just trying to understand it better.
I believe that your question is if the project doesn't come to $9 million, it will be 25% of whatever the eligible costs are.
25% total, I see. That's what I was trying to understand. I wasn't sure if it was 25% of whatever, you know, again...
Yeah, but if it's $10 million, that, that's... There's, there's a maximum to the grant, 25% not to exceed a certain dollar.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Appreciate the explanation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the, to audience participation. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak? Please come on up and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Elaine Solano, uh, 21 Interstate Street. I've lived there since 1976 and I'd just like to know what plans there are to repave the street. It's been in terrible condition for years now and not only interstate street, but go up to the top of the street, to the left, to the right on Hillside, or you're hitting our bumps, go down Woodland, same thing, go downhill Crest, same thing. And it's, it's been in terrible shape for years now and it's just getting worse and worse. And there's three houses to sell on the street. As far as I know, only one is possibly sold, so I don't think that looks good for people So I don't think that looks good for people coming into the village. I had a friend one time take me home, this was two years ago, who commented on how bad the street was and how the village couldn't be doing something about it. It's also unsafe. We have a lot of children on the street, ride bikes, walk. So I just would like to know what plans there are.
Okay, Mr. Zawicki, do we have plans for that section of Suffolk for repaving?
Uh, we can mention the Hillcrest.
Well, Hillwell, Hillcrest, I mean, when we come to the top of the street, you go to the left on Hillside, there have been holes that have been repaired, but they're still bumpy. You go to the right, there was a big hole that was filled in with gravel. The gravel's all over. Um, you go down Woodland, but, I mean, I'm in and out of my street all the time.
Yeah.
What, what street was it that you lived on? Interesting.
Your, uh, current plans, um, for paving, uh, Hillside from, I'm sorry, uh, Hillcrest from Forest to the, uh, to, uh, the dead-
Dead end.
Somerset to Forest. So that remaining section of Hillcrest is going to be paved.
Okay, but that's, that's-
Um, Interstate is not on our list and Woodland is not on our list. They are identified as roadways that need to be paved, um, and most likely will make the list next year. We plan on spending about $510,000 this year on these roads. Uh, and, yeah, we're, we're trying to catch up with, uh, road resurfacing throughout the village.
But you're saying 2020 or 2021?
Uh, this time next year.
20.
This time next year.
So we have a process in place where they evaluate the roads and the limited amount of funds. Like, I believe this year, we paved around 600,000 or 500,000. We're doing another 500,000, which is a very costly undertaking. And we do understand that, you know, the need and necessity for the safety in the road and the stability of the road and for the residents. And at the same time, we evaluate each roadway accordingly as, as the DBW superintendent.
You have a small street like Sunset that has like three houses on it.
Mm-hmm.
That's beautiful.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it, the, the street has been in poor shape for years and I really would like all of you to take a walk down the street. I mean, the, I don't know what you call it, McAdam, whatever. It's all pulling away from the curb. Weeds are growing all over. My husband and I spent hours pulling weeds just out of the street. And it, it's gone on too long.
Okay, how about, let's, let's, uh, Mr. Zawicki, let's go down Interstate and evaluate and see what we can do. I know it's not on the repaving list, the schedule, but if there's additional funds after outpaving or whatever may take place, or what we can do now to make certain repairs to, to alleviate the, the holes, the potholes of this repair.
Okay, that would be good.
Yeah, 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 we apologize that we could rather be a bit-
I know, but again, it shouldn't have gotten to the point that it looks like now, you know? So, it should have been done if no one-
Let us take a look at it. Um, if you can get out there tomorrow and evaluate it, please.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Charles, I actually have a question. Is there, I mean, I realize we do only, you know, a certain number of roads each year because of the cost involved and that makes sense, but is there sort of a timetable, if you will, like, like every 10 years, you can expect a road to be done or something to that effect? In other words, how, I don't know-
Well, the, uh, expected life on a, on a roadway is, and you pretty much hit it 10, 11 years or so.
Yeah.
So, I mean, ideally, if funds are available, if we could do 10% of the roads every year.
So, are we on that kind of target, is I guess what I'm asking?
Well, yeah, as you probably wear, there was a couple of years we really didn't do any work because of our, of our funds. Um, however, we're trying to catch up at this point. And, um, we will need to continue, at least at this pace, over the next three or four years to be able to-
If we continued at the current pace for 10 years, would it be safe to say that every road would be completed?
Well, that's, I mean, yeah, the, we're, I think we're at a fairly high level at this point. Um, I, I believe over the next, say, three, four, maybe five years, that, that level could drop off a little bit and still be able to maintain that-
Okay.
-that 10% a year.
Okay, that's what I wanted to understand, is whether we're at least on target or whether we're way below that level. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Please come up to the microphone and state your name and address.
Tim Genatino, Tomb Memorial. Any progress on Memorial along the river?
I was just in a meeting today with, uh, the director of the drainage agency, so, yes. So as of today, you know, we're still strategizing on the approach to take to it. It's going to be a very costly endeavor he made-
In other words, the county doesn't want to pay.
What's that?
In other words, the county doesn't want to pay.
Well, I mean, he came up with some good suggestions actually for the road. Actually putting sidewalks on either side of it or on one side of it, which wouldn't be a bad idea. You know, connecting, connecting, say, the pool and Horton Field area back over to, uh, uh, back towards the Knolls, over to the bridge. You know, moving the road out, away from the river.
Moving it in.
Moving it in or, right, whichever way you want.
Yeah, you gotta go in. You can't go the other way.
Depends on which, if you're looking this way, it's in. If you're looking this way, it's out.
I'm glad you're laughing. I'm laughing too, but eventually, you're going to have to deal with it.
No, we, yeah, like I said, I was in a meeting with him today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just, uh, wanted to know if anybody's stepping up? Not yet.
Not with the money. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Yeah.
Can you just come up to the mic, please? Sure.
Uh, sorry, I forgot to mention that the proposal I gave for the Velardi Field, by no means is that a request for funds from the village. That proposal will be fully supported by the Suffolk Little League. So we are not asking any money from the village to, for that project.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hi. A reference to Memorial Drive. When they were building Squire's Gate, there were, was a lot of concern. Most of the people in the neighborhood, the residents, even some of the business people were against it. They said because of where it was located, because it wasn't always flooding, they didn't think it was a good idea. The village went ahead with it. There were investigations started. My father, some of the police officers on the department, myself were involved in the investigations. A witness was going down. We were told people north, on the north side of the boulevard, north of the boulevard, didn't have anything to do with it because Squire's Gate was on the south side of the boulevard, therefore it didn't infect them. There were surveys done, geological, seismological, subterranean, aerial surveys, photographs. They had, they worked with-
They did an extensive study on that project.
It was a major study, yes.
Mm-hmm.
They worked with the Army Corps of Engineers. There were a lot of people involved in that. This guy was one heck of a crook and the people financing him that did it.
Sorry.
We're paying for it now. But part of that included the north, all the way up north. And they also did the Ramapo parts of-
Carol, just so I know, like, what do we-
We're on our fault.
But what are we trying to, what are we trying to get to? Like, what, what is the point?
I don't know where the surveys are. They're supposed to be in your records.
Right. So what are we, what are you asking?
Way back then, they knew that this bank was being eroded and was going to cave in.
Oh, okay.
All right. There should be stuff in the surveys. I don't know what you're up to because I'm being kept out of the loop.
Yeah.
But you need to consider going down the line, whatever you do, taking into consideration the erosion, the flooding, the water flow during heavy storms.
Yeah.
Earthquakes, because it is an earthquake fault, was affected earthquakes.
Yeah.
This all needs to be taken in consideration when you do that.
When did they build that road? Do, does anyone actually know?
The problem with the road, oh, this, the road has been there like forever.
Right.
The two, two waterways, the Ramapo River, the Mola River, were passages. People came down with them with their rafts, with their canoes, with their boats, but they can't do it any now, now. I mean, it's just, you couldn't navigate-
I think they used to swim over there too, in a, in that portion, along Memorial Drive.
His, his uncle, my dad, we had kids from all over the neighborhood with swimming in it.
All right, well, I'm going to look for those other documents.
I, yeah, there, there might be documents somewhere that could be helpful because they didn't know that there was an erosion problem. This is what Squire's Gate was being built.
Mm-hmm.
And they were considering the impact of Squire's-
They built that road too close to the, to the river.
Yes.
Well, the road originally got wider. No, the river-
The river got wider?
The impact, when they did it, when you put in the throwaway and when you did all this stuff, it's like a bottleneck.
Right.
Just like a corkscrew, a cork in a bottle of champagne.
Mm-hmm.
That water all backs up behind the throwaway and then it releases a little bit and as it goes down past Avon, it backs up some more.
Yeah.
Because, and then when the pressure builds up behind it, it pushes and the water gushes out.
Right. That's what the drainage agency says. He's been explaining that to me.
From the, the brick.
All right.
So dredging down below caused greater erosion up above.
Up, up top, right.
But increase of the water flow and the, uh-
All right, we're gonna, we're, we're, we're looking into it. Like I said, I was been, been, I've been meeting with the drainage agency and they, they control all the rivers and streams in the county, so.
Yeah, it's all changed since Squire's Gate.
All right, yeah. Well, we know that, right? All right, thank you.
Just keep an open mind on that because you still got to worry about that bridge.
Oh, yeah.
That overpass from the throwaway.
Yeah, yeah.
That's supposed to be a span bridge. It's not supposed to be flopped down in the middle of the lake.
Right, right. All righty, thank you.
That's half of your problem.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? No? Okay. Mr. Zawicki, Department of Public Works, please.
Good evening. I'd like to update the, uh, the board. Currently have, um, three projects that are substantially complete. The, um, South Street Pump Station Emergency Generator Replacement Project, the Sanitary Sewer System Abatement Contract One and Two, uh, with, um, punch list items remaining on those projects.
So for the South Street Generator, you still have items that are outstanding?
Well, just, um, just punch list items. So-
Okay.
Generator is, is, uh, functioning. The project is substantially complete, meaning that, um, it is not, it won't be finally complete until all the punch list items are addressed.
Right. And then the Phase Two?
The, um, Sanitary Sewer Abatement Project, Phase Two.
Liner?
Contract One and Two are both substantially completed.
Okay.
Now, there is, um, there is the one item that, um, we have the Washington Avenue, um, that was a bid alternate-
The SPUR.
On, uh, Contract One, which, um, we've been, um, we're hopeful that the developer will be, uh, addressing that issue as a part of his project.
Is there a timeframe for that?
Yeah, the, uh, consent order, um, gives us until, uh, March of 2020 to get that work completed. Um, under the circumstances, uh, depending on how things play out with the, uh, the developer, we may, uh, need to, um, to have a discussion with the DC for a possible, uh, short extension. But, uh, the rest of the work is, uh, substantially completed.
Going to the track record of the developer?
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't, I don't think, um, so when are we going to undertake that Washington Avenue?
Um, well, we have, um, we have, uh, a contract with the current contractor. Uh, we would possibly be imposed an additional cost for remobilization if we had to come back and do that. Um, the unfortunate reality is if we did do that work as part of the developer's, uh, work, um, it would be ripped out and redone because it, that work is within his building envelope of, uh-
And if we don't do it?
Well, I mean, it's the serious thing. I mean, we could, um, based on the circumstances, I would suggest that, you know, if, if it doesn't look like the developer is moving forward, that we, um, set a meeting with the DC and explain our circumstances and see, uh, you know, what options we may have.
Let's talk more about that.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, um, we've had a couple of meetings with him in the past, um, and every time we do meet, he's, you know, he's positive about moving forward, but, you know.
I can't imagine what he's going to do to work.
Okay, um, I am requesting authorization for Mr. John Conklin and Mr. Eric Anderson to attend the Hudson Valley Water Works Conference Seminar on Thursday, August 8th, 2019, in Middletown, New York at a cost of $30 per employee.
So I have the, I have this resolution authorizing John Conklin and Eric Anderson to attend the Hudson Valley Water Works Conference, August seminar, August 8th, 2019, in Middletown, New York at a cost of $30 per employee. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I am requesting payment authorization of application of payment number one in the amount of $173,386.40 to Tam Enterprises, Inc. for the, um, Phase Two Sanitary Sewer Abatement Project, Contract One Pipe Replacement.
I have the resolution authorizing payment number one to Tam Enterprises for the Sanitary Sewer Abatement Project, Phase Two, Contract Number One Pipe Replacement. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Trustee Hagan, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Gerard, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I am requesting authorization to prepare an RFP in pursuit of the recommendations incorporated within the tree assessment prepared by Barlett Tree Experts. Proposals will be due at the end of business on August 27th, 2019.
So I have the resolution authorizing a request for proposal for tree assessment activities. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Trustee Hagan, second?
Second.
Trustee Albert, any discussion? I just subject a review of all required documents by the village attorney that the RFP be reviewed.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I am requesting authorization to accept the lowest submitted base bid from Tilcon, New York for the roadway improvements, Phase 10, in the amount of $509,982.50.
So I have the resolution authorizing acceptance of the low bid for roadway improvements, Phase 10, in the amount of $509,982.50. Do I have a motion? Trustee Hertzmann, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
I am requesting authorization to accept the ad alternate bid number one for the Village Hall Police Parking Lot in the amount of $97,990. Um, this project would be added to the Tilcon, New York Base Bid Contract.
Sorry, so you said the resolution authorizing the acceptance of the low bid for the Village Hall paving project. Did you say that?
Yes, Village Hall Police Parking Lot.
Oh, oh, police, Village Hall Police, Village Hall and Police Parking Lot, I guess, right? Both lots?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Will be added to the Phase 10 project total?
Yes.
So I have that resolution, the amount of, Mr. Janito?
Yeah, just for clarification, uh, the contract might be the same, but the purchase orders, invoices, statements and so forth, that can be made separate. If one involves a road project, one involves a parking lot- that can be made separate. If one involves a road project, one involves a parking lot.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's the way it'd be set up. That's why we set it up the way we did in terms of the ad alternate.
Right, for the roads versus parking lots.
Right.
Okay, so we have that resolution authorizing the acceptance of the low bid for the Village Hall paving project in the amount of $97,990. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Gerard, second?
Second.
Trustee Hertzman, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Only one bid was received for the 2019 Right-Away Improvements Project. My recommendation to the board is to reject the bid and, and rebid the project.
Okay, I have the resolution rejecting the bid for the Right-Away Improvements from ATEC Concrete Company. Do I have any amount of $207,120? Hold on, yeah.
Is, is, I'm just curious, is this bid, I mean, I don't, you know, I'm not sure exactly, you only got the one bid, is this?
Hold on.
Yeah, that's what I'm basically.
One at a time.
How much work is included in the scope of this? And would this particular company be encouraged to bid again if this is open for bidding again?
Well, I got a couple questions there. I'll try to answer the second one first. Yeah, we never know when you publicly advertise for a bid. You know, you never know who's gonna actually bid, and it was unfortunate, we only got one bidder.
Right, I'm just making sure, in other words, I'm just trying to understand, in other words, we've, if we go through with this, we're rejecting their bid, but that doesn't preclude them from bidding again?
Oh, no, no.
That's what I'm trying to understand. I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I wasn't clear.
Okay, I apologize for not being clear.
No, that's right, they can bid again.
Right. And is, is, as far as the scope of this project, is there sort of a value, so to speak? Like, what if it comes back and we still only have one bid, just for argument's sake?
Well, I had a brief discussion with the mayor just a while ago, and, you know, after consulting with some of the surrounding municipalities, a lot of the contractors are very, very busy right now.
Yeah.
And this project is a fall project. And in many cases, these contractors have already, or have a full slate for the year. And that may have been what occurred here. So, rebidding, we're very aggressive in getting the advertisement out. And again, it's very unfortunate, we only got the one bid. I'm just hoping that we can, you know, again, by rebidding it, have a greater success.
Right, my question, though, was, so we have this one bid. I don't know the exact scope of this project, but is, based on previous estimates for this sort of work, is the one bid we received, it's high, that's what I wanted to hear.
About 30% high.
That's exactly what I was looking to understand, was this a unusually high?
If it was a good price, you'd go with it, right?
That's what I'm trying to understand. We're refusing it because it's a high bid. That's not clear. Thank you, appreciate that. That's exactly what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Okay, so I have the resolution rejecting the bid for the Right-Away Improvements from ATEC Concrete Company. Also, in the wherewithal, the Director of Public Works says he determined that the bid should be re-advertised to provide for additional bids. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Trustee Alpert, second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any discussion?
What specifically were the, was this project, what specific, it says Right-Away Improvements.
Yeah, it was curb replacement and ADA ramps.
Oh, okay.
Right, yeah.
On what street?
It was, you know, concrete work opposed to asphalt work, so different contract.
On what streets, or what street?
Well, the ADA ramps, there were, I believe, five on Foxwood. And there was one that was added into Chestnut as something that, if we felt we needed to add it, I put it into the bid. And on these type of bids, it's, it's unit cost. So if we don't do one of the ADA ramps, we just don't pay for it.
Yeah.
So the other one is the curbing on Lancaster.
Lancaster, okay.
Curbing on?
Lancaster.
Lancaster.
And how critical are these, like, I understand the ADA ramps sound like it's very important. How critical is the curb replacement on Lancaster?
That area, the Stonegate area, going back 11, maybe 12 years ago, a lot of the area was a process of reclamation, it was a process of rebuilding the road, essentially. And at that time, they replaced the curb, the Belgium Block curb in the surrounding area. Lancaster was never part of that.
I see, so all the other streets have.
Yeah, all the surrounding areas have been redone.
I know exactly what you're talking about. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, motion passes.
Okay, similar fashion, only one bid was received for the Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project. Again, my recommendation to the board is to reject the submitted bid and to rebid the project. Again, one bidder, high bid price.
So I have the resolution redirecting the bid for the Wayne Avenue Project from ATEC Concrete Company. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Trustee Gerard, second? Trustee Hagan, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Authorization, requesting authorization to participate in the Orange and Rockland 2% threshold program. That's the light replacement.
LED light replacement program.
Yeah, LED light replacement. O and R provides, or allows, the village up to 2% at no cost to replace the LED bulbs. You just gotta, you know, participate in and identify those areas where we wanna replace the bulbs.
So I have the resolution authorizing Charles Zawicki to execute the agreement with Orange and Rockland to participate in the 2% system threshold program by August 30th, 2019. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On the discussion that, when they consider the failed luminaries, that means just the lights that go out at that time, like, is that it? So whenever they're gonna make the replacement, the light had to fail? Their light had to fail? Is that correct?
It was part of the 2%, we can identify the areas we wanna replace. They don't have to be burnt out.
They don't have to be?
Yeah.
Okay.
What if they just broke?
So they'll replace, if they, if they failed, O and R is replacing them with LED, and that is included in the 2% or not?
So, for example, if you have a broken or burnt out bulb, we use a process.
Right.
You know, that.
The portal.
Clark is involved in.
Right, we have the portal that we enter the information, the pole number, and they evaluate.
Replace with a regular, you know, mercury vapor, whatever, whatever the bulb is there.
So it doesn't matter what the cause, if the light doesn't work anymore, we can, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I am requesting payment authorization of application of payment number five in the amount of $76,394.25, and application for payment number six in the amount of $45,752 to Valentine Electric for the South Street Pump Station Emergency Generator Replacement Project.
Is this the project that you said you're down to punch list item?
Yes, yes.
So is payment six final payment?
No, no, still be retainage.
Okay.
And I believe there's a little bit plus the retainage.
Okay.
So I have the resolution authorizing payments number five and six to Valentine Electric for the South Street Pump Station Emergency Generator Project. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Gerard, second? Trustee Hagan, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
I did have one question about that, actually. I'm sorry, we went straight to the vote. So it seems we've had, for the last several months, we've had payments to Valentine for this. Is there, what is the rough total of expected cost of this project, soup to nuts?
The project cost?
Yeah. Including all the different stages of payments that we've made, roughly, I mean.
It's about 300 and, 330, 325, 330.
Because I know we've, we've approved each month certain amounts.
Right.
I just haven't been keeping a tally, so I wanted to get an idea where we stand.
I'm keeping a tally.
I'm sure you are. I just want to get an idea where we stand.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Charles, I had one question, just apologize about absence of a workshop. There was a note that you sent out at the end of June to All Island Plumbing for some pavement restoration?
Yeah, that was completed.
They did complete it?
Yeah, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Charles, one other thing. Do you remember when you and I were talking to the mayor, and there was that symposium that was the following day?
The Water Symposium.
Yeah, the Water.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, were you able to go?
Yeah, I went to that, yes.
Yeah, was it worthwhile?
Yes. You have to say yes.
Yeah, I gotta say yes. I gotta say yes. Yeah, it, it was a lot, you know, there was a pretty sizable group. And I think it was a positive, you know, the end of the, end of the meeting was, it was a positive, and they got some good results. Some good discussion, some ideas, some good ideas. But, you know, it's, you know, I think it really came off of, for years now, the task force. There was the Water Task Force, and that was kind of an offshoot from that. And, you know, Suez was not in attendance on that, that meeting, but, you know, they're, you know, the name came up quite a bit, you know, so. But it was good, it was good overall, it was good overall, yeah.
Thank you. Best to last, Mr. Janito.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. We have a resolution before you awarding an installment purchase contract for the financing of two police vehicles for three years. Little background on that, you had previously adopted a resolution authorizing the purchase of the vehicles. This authorizes the financing. We reached out to at least four companies, including this one that bid, and including Ford Motor Credit Company, which is the manufacturer of the automobile. So we're recommending that you accept this and award this bid for the installment purchase contract.
So I have the resolution authorizing the village treasurer to sign the installment purchase contract for the financing of the 2020 police vehicles. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hertzman, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any discussion?
Yeah, just a, just a question, Mike. So we're gonna pay for this over a three-year period. Typically, how long do these vehicles last us?
The police cars, we have some that are still, we're turning in 2006 cars for what we have. But generally, we like to have a fleet that's at least, you know, no more than five years, six years old, because they have to be on the road, obviously, 24/7.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we're running cars that are 13 years old and up.
And it's a tough ride because it's all idling pretty much.
Is, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Are vehicles gonna come off the road when these vehicles arrive?
That's, the police chief works.
Elaine, can you see if the chief is, I'm sorry, Mike, is the chief right in the hallway?
I was going to say that the chief works with the Public Works Department to sell off the older vehicles. Some are used for parts and others are, you know.
Would they end up on that Gov. Deals thing, or?
Yes, that's where we are going lately.
Chief, we were just talking about the vehicle replacement program and the two vehicles that we're purchasing on the lease agreement, and how you're gonna rotate the other two vehicles, or whatever you're doing with the, the older model vehicles that are going to Gov. Deals, or?
Yeah, the two of those, yeah, the two vehicles coming out, that'll be taken out of service. One be going to Gov. Deals, actually, we're both gonna be going to Gov. Deals. I should say, the Unmar car has a lot of mechanical issues, it's a 2006, but it's gonna be going to Gov. Deals.
Okay. That's good. Trustee Alpert?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Mayor, the next resolution is a bond authorization, I'm sorry, project authorization resolution. You awarded, or accepted the award of the bid for the Phase 10 base bid on the capital project for roadway improvements. This project establishes the financing for that. Two hundred, the total project cost is $515,200, which includes the base bid amount plus an amount of 2% for financing. The portion that will be financed by debt. So we have $200,264 coming in from CHIPS, that's state aid. Another form of state aid known as PAVE New York, $28,640. And additional state aid for extreme weather, which is $20,633. The remaining balance of $265,663 will be financed by debt. As I mentioned, the total project cost of $515,200 is the base bid amount plus approximately 2% of the financing piece for debt. And just to, so anyhow, that's gonna establish this project.
So I have the resolution establishing the capital project, 2020-002, 2020 roadway improvement, Phase 10. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Gerard, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any further discussion? So roll call vote, Trustee Alpert?
Yes.
Trustee Gerard?
Yes.
Trustee Hagan?
Yes.
Trustee Hertzman?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes.
The next resolution is establishing project for the Village Hall Parking Lot Repaving. And that project is going to be financed by debt. The project amount is $100,000, and that includes the award for the actual work, the construction, plus approximately a 2% financing cost.
So I have a resolution establishing capital project, 2020-004, 2020 Village Hall Parking Lot Repaving. Do I have a motion? Trustee Hagan, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hertzman, any further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to refresh myself. What is the period of the debt? In other words, is it three years, five years, what's the?
For a parking lot, it's as much as 10 years. That's the maximum.
Okay, and how much, I apologize for the last one.
For roadway improvements, 15 years.
15 years, okay. I'm just marking it down.
Any further discussion? Trustee Alpert?
Yes.
Trustee Gerard?
Yes.
Trustee Hagan?
Yes.
Trustee Hertzman?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes.
The next resolution is establishing a capital project for the repaving of the New Jersey Transit Rail Lot. That's right, the one right next to the train station. The lot is owned by New Jersey Transit, and the work will be paid for 100% by New Jersey Transit. However, they have asked us, and that's part of our agreement with them, for the capital improvements to that lot. The village goes out and will seek bids for the work, which we have. And once the bids are awarded, they would be awarded by New Jersey Transit, actually. But the funds will be coming from an account that will be reimbursed to us. In other words, a New Jersey Transit account in their name, they actually pay for the cost. But this just establishes the project so when it's on our books, we can see the activity in and out.
So I have the resolution establishing capital project, 2020-005, 2020 New Jersey Transit Parking Lot Repaving. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Alpert, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hertzman, any further discussion?
Just a clarification, Mike, you said we're gonna be reimbursed, so does that mean, so we have to put out the funds first to get the work done?
Actually, we have control of the funds. Part of their agreement is that they have an account where we are signers on the account for them. And so what will happen is when the bill has to be paid, yes, we'll run the check out of the general fund, but we take the money immediately from the other fund.
Okay.
What if the amount is, just for argument's sake, we're agreeing to a certain amount, but what if it's $500 more or $1,000 more?
The money has to be in place before we would spend it. I mean, from New Jersey Transit.
Is the amount? Is the amount here, is that based on any, any contractor's estimation, or?
Yeah, there was actually, um, one of the bid awards was, that came in.
Okay, I know a lot of them, I can remember, okay.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Trustee Albert?
Yes.
Trustee Gerard?
Yes.
Trustee Hagan?
Yes.
Trustee Hertzman?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes.
All right. On the next two resolutions, these are bond resolutions, and just for everybody's information, two things. One is that they both are subject to a permissive referendum, which means that they actually become effective. First of all, there's a 30-day period, which the public can come forward and force a referendum if they have 10% of the registered voters sign a petition requesting such a referendum. And then there's an additional 20-day estoppel period, which is the standard with any bond resolution, where somebody can challenge it under constitutional grounds. In any event, we are allowed to spend funds ahead of time as soon as the resolution is adopted. The only risk we run is that if somebody does challenge and wins that challenge and it goes to permissive referendum and fails, any money we put out, we couldn't take out of, we couldn't finance through bonds. So, we're pretty comfortable with the fact that a 50-day period of time for these roadway improvements is what it is, bonding for that and for parking lots, will be sufficient for us to, to make sure that things are in place before we actually have any major expenditures. In any event, the other thing with a bond resolution, it requires a supermajority, meaning a four affirmative votes of the village board in order to pass. And with that, we have, the first one is for bonding for roadway improvements, and that is within the amount of $500,000, and that will cover our current roads that you just adopted resolutions authorizing the bid award, plus additional work that will be coming forward. So we try to keep the resolutions minimal. Every time we have a resolution prepared by the bond council, there's a fee for that. So by keeping the resolution higher than we need to, it reduces that cost. It doesn't mean that we actually have to go out and borrow that amount of money. We only borrow that amount of money when it's needed. So the first one is $500,000 for roadway improvements.
I don't know if I have that paperwork.
Hold on now.
I have, paperwork I have has something for $253,000.
Face ten, yeah.
A bond resolution?
Well. The bond resolution here for the village here adopted August 5th, authorized in the construction and improving the village roads, stating that the estimated maximum cost of the project is $500,000, appropriating said amount for such purpose, and authorizing the issuance of bonds in a principal amount of $500,000 to be financed, to finance said appropriation. Is that the correct bond?
That is correct.
Yes. Do you have a copy, does the board have a copy of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just another note on this, these resolutions were prepared by our bond council.
Okay, this is it, you got it. So I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, trustee Albert?
Yes.
Trustee Gerard?
Yes.
Trustee Hagan?
Yes.
Trustee Hertzman?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
The next resolution is for parking lot improvements, and same as the one for roadway improvements, we need a affirmative vote of at least four members of the village board.
So I have the bond resolution of the village of South from New York adopted August 5th, authorizing construction, construction and improvements to the village parking lot, stating that the estimated maximum cost thereof is $400,000, appropriating said amount for such purpose, and authorizing the issuance of bonds in the principal amount of $400,000 financed to finance said appropriation. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion trustee Hertzman, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any further discussion?
Um, yeah, just, okay, so, I want to understand this. So the, the parking lot here, the village, we were estimating $100,000. The others, we said we were gonna rebid, so you're, you're, we're approving this for the amount, assuming once we get new bids back?
That will need maybe $300,000 for that one, yes.
Okay.
That's this one, right?
Gotcha.
That's parking lot B.
Right.
Have to look at that. Okay, trustee Albert?
Yes.
Trustee Gerard?
Yes.
Trustee Hagan?
Yes.
Trustee Hertzman?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay, the next resolution is, actually has to do with the village attorney, or who was the acting village attorney, Robert Magrino. He was the, as you know, the assistant village attorney. He was acting village attorney for a while, and the village board had adopted a resolution to pay a stipend to him until such time as a village attorney was appointed by the board. As you know, we entered into an agreement with Keenan Bean to provide those services to us, acting as our village attorneys, and what this does is, there wasn't a resolution that was adopted after that removing the stipend. So what this does is removes the stipend effective June 1, which is our fiscal year and for this fiscal year's budget.
So I have the resolution discontinuing acting village attorney stipend to Robert Magrino effective June 1, 2019, non pro tunc. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any discussion?
I have a question. So if this is non pro tunc back to June 1, I mean, we're already in August, so is it safe to assume that some of this stipend was already paid between?
And it will be returned, yes.
It'll all be returned? Okay, just make, trying to make sure I understand that. And was the continuation passed April, I'm sorry, excuse me, February 11, from February to June, to June 1? I assume, I mean, that essentially an oversight, or was that an anticipated cost?
Well, I think it was the first time that a village attorney services were, at least in my recollection, an outside firm was producing, providing those services as village attorney to the village, so I don't think anybody in the village clerk's office, or anyone else for that matter, knew that a resolution should have been submitted and then passed on to payroll and so forth. So yes, I do believe it was an error, but I don't think anybody really is to blame on it. It was the first time it was actually done.
I was trying to understand if perhaps there was like a contractual thing where it was six months or something like that?
No, no, I believe that the original resolution as acting village attorney was until such time as the village attorney was appointed.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let me get to that. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most passes.
The next one is a very minor budget amendment, whereas the, the utility cost, that's a portion to the museum, that is the railroad museum, the one off of Orange Avenue in the parking lot, if everybody's familiar with that. There's a utility cost to that. In any event, there wasn't a separate amount in the budget provided for it, it was included in the general utilities, and we realized that we actually generally keep that separate because it comes in a separate bill. And this is just amending the budget to move the money from the general utilities budget over to the department for the village museum.
So I have a resolution amending 2019-2020 museum budget. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hagan, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Gerard, any further discussion?
Yeah, I do have a question. So the, so this is, when, when you say utilities, is referring to like?
Electric, electricity.
So I know that the, uh, the railroad museum is open very limited hours, you know, once a week or something, and similar, very limited hours on the museum upstairs. It seems like a lot for utilities for such small.
That's what we've been paying approximately.
That includes heat.
Okay.
Yeah.
Heat would add something.
They heat the building so the pipes don't break.
Something else, okay. I was just trying to, it was strictly electric.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next resolution, our mailing machine is, is coming to the end of its lease in September, and there are actually only four companies authorized in the United States today to offer postage machine meter rentals. So we went out to all four firms and sought bids for a new lease on the postage machine, and of those, Pitney Bowes, which happens to be our current provider, actually had the lowest cost proposal. And it also saved this additional cost in transferring the meter, what was on the meter, if we had gone with another vendor, there's a cost associated with transferring the money from that other meter to their meter. In any event, we're recommending that the board accept the proposal from Pitney Bowes for a five-year lease on the mailing machine, and, uh, and authorizing me to sign those documents.
So I have the resolution authorizing the village treasurer to sign lease agreement for the mailing machine. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Gerard, um, Albert, I'm sorry, second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next resolution would be for me to, authorize me to sign on a three-year lease for dedicated internet services and telephone systems for the, predominantly for the village hall, but also for outside, like the fire departments, street department, water and sewer. Essentially, we went out to a number of companies, Verizon was one of them. Verizon said they could not submit a proposal because they don't provide files to this location, and they, the phone system that's associated with the files couldn't be provided since they don't provide files. Our current provider, which is actually a third-party service provider, we would have to go to two different companies, them, we'd have to go to, through them for an internet connection, and then to a separate hardware service company for the phones themselves. So, and their pricing was not competitive with Altice. Altice came in with a very good deal for us. As a matter of fact, just for the phone system at Village Hall, the amount of money that we save on the phone system here pays for dedicated 100-speed internet up and down, which is significant, because the speeds currently coming into Village Hall are provided free, uh, free through Altice as part of their agreement. They're only five over 30, which they don't even make today, so to speak. So anyhow, this is a great deal for us, and the total cost would be $21.45 per month. That amount includes everything. It includes the equipment, service, support, maintenance, and we have not only a direct line to connect to if we have a technical problem or a support issue, but we're also given a, an escalation set of numbers that goes right up to the vice president of operations if we had to contact them if we weren't satisfied with a support issue.
So I have the resolution authorizing the village treasurer to sign telephone and dedicated internet service agreement. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Gerard, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hertzman, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next resolution is requesting permission to attend the New York State Government Finance Officers Association Annual Conference, April 1 to 3, 2020, and that's going to be held up in Albany. And of course, we would ensure that the funds would have to be in the budget in order to attend the conference.
So I have a resolution authorizing Michael Janito to attend the New York State GFOA 2020 Annual Conference, April 1 through 3, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one is a request to, authorization to attend the Government Finance Officers Association, that's of the United States and Canada, May 17 to 20, in 2020, in New Orleans, Louisiana. Once again, the money would have to be in the budget to cover that, which I believe we do have it in there. The other issue I want to note on these, both of these conferences provide CPE credits, a large amount of credits for the short stay that you're there, and the, the other thing about them is that, again, it's, it's gotta be in the budget in order to attend either of both of these.
So I have the resolution authorizing Michael Janito to attend the GFOA 2020 Conference, May 17 through 20, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hertzman, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one other note on these, you may note that these dates are April and May, and you know, why would somebody ask so early in the process? Well, typically around January, they start sending out, or even earlier, requi, early registration, where you can actually reduce the cost of registration by registering early. The other resolution is to attend along with the mayor and the village clerk, the NICOM, New York Conference of Mayors Fall Training for City and Village Officials, September 16 to 20 in Saratoga Springs, New York. Again, all the funds would have to be in the budget to cover that.
So I have the resolution authorizing Michael Janito, Edwin Marconis, and Amy Paffenrod to attend NICOM Fall Training for City and Village Officials, September 16 through 20 in Saratoga Springs, New York. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hertzman, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Janito, we just have one lingering, hanging chat here. The resolution establishing the capital project 06, did we pull that?
Uh, we did pull that.
Right.
06 was what was referred to as the right-of-way improvements project.
Right.
Which you tabled tonight, they're going to rebid. That's that add-on alternate.
Okay.
So we're, we pulled that one in order to wait until the numbers come in. And additionally, along with the project for Wayne Avenue, the sidewalks, we're going to need a resolution from bond council, since they're both involving sidewalks and curbs.
All right, so we're just tabling this until we, okay. Wow. That's a record of resolutions tonight.
So I left that book.
Chief, you sure you don't want to throw something in?
Okay.
All right. You're looking at me like I left it out.
Solution envy.
You could work closely with Chief on that, he, he.
Mike, I do have another question, though, I apologize. Um, so I know a month or two ago, we voted on decommissioning some vehicles and things like that, but I haven't, you know, spot checking, I haven't seen them posted on gov deals, so I was just curious, have they been listed yet?
I, I know that they actually did sell.
Oh, they did sell?
Yeah, a couple of the vehicles.
Okay, I might have missed it, maybe they were up, I, I didn't check every day, I checked like?
Yeah, I'll check with Joe Hunt tomorrow, because he basically manages that side of it when it's public work.
I was just curious, so they did sell, that's great.
Yeah, they did sell a couple of them at least.
Okay, great news, thank you.
Okay, trustee, trustee Albert, do you have anything further?
Uh, nothing further.
Trustee Gerard?
Um, just, no, only an apology for to the board and to the department heads and the residents for being late. I got stuck in New York City and I was a victim of the trains, so I apologize.
Trustee Hagan?
One last, is what it went to. Yes, I have something. Point Park, we want to, we want to fix it up before August 18, because we're dedicating it to Dave Clifford. So there's a field piece there, a cannon, and I'd like the board's support, like to approve a resolution.
Motion.
That volunteers can fix that, scrape it, paint it, which I'll be one, I think the mayor's gonna be one. But we need approval from the board to do that.
So, yeah, so Frank and I had this discussion, along with the veterans of foreign wars and the American Legion, along with the union president, to see if we would be interfering with any union work. So we are looking for the authorization for volunteers from the veterans organizations to scrape and paint the field piece at Point Park. The union has no objection to this. So do I have a motion to that? Oh, hold on, we have a way. Oh, hold on, we have a waiver. That's the piece of artillery that is down at the...
Point Park.
People that call it a cannon?
No.
Okay.
They would call it a...
It's an artillery piece.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know, you know, is it something that could get damaged through scraping of that, or?
It is, it is pretty beat up. We can't do any further damage to it.
Okay.
You know, it's just a matter of scraping off the old rusted paint.
Okay.
And putting on some rusted...
I just wanted to understand how delicate it was and whether it's something...
It's from 1990, it's 100 years old, actually.
Okay.
I think it says 1919 on it.
Okay.
So the VFW, the VFW did purchase it, and then they donated it back to the village, and we accepted it, I don't know how many years ago, but it hasn't been touched, so we'd like to paint it.
Sure.
So do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, trustee Gerard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Trustee Hertzman?
No, nothing more tonight.
Nothing more tonight. Okay, next, the mayor. I have a resolution reappointing Robert Yodowitz as village prosecutor for the villagers suffering on a contract basis effective August 1st, 2019, through July 31st, 2020, at a flat rate fee of $1,500 per month, subject to the execution of a formal contract for said services. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, trustee Gerard, second?
I'll second.
Second, trustee Hagan, discussion?
This is just a reappointment of an existing, right?
Reappointment of the existing at the same monthly rate.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next resolution establishing the position of court attendant on call. Resolve the board of trustees establishes the position of court attendant on call in the suffering justice court effective August 5th, 2019. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a, trustee Hertzman, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any discussion?
This is a new position?
This is a new position, yes.
So what did we do in the past in lieu of this?
In the past, we always had two, two court attendants, and we had one as a standby that wasn't established with the Rockland County.
I see.
So whenever we needed, if either one of the regular court attendants were unavailable, we went to this pool and we pulled this one particular individual, which will be named next, to fill in for the absence of, in the absence of one of the two.
And this instead establishes that person as being the...
In the villagers suffering.
Okay.
Right.
So you wouldn't be pulling from the pool as all that changes? Is that correct?
You're having three said positions.
Okay.
Yeah, but you're only using one.
At a time.
At a time.
And you're only paying for one at a time?
You're only paying for one at a time.
Okay, I understand. It's fine.
So do I have a, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion on that?
Motion.
Trustee Hertzman, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, trustee Gerard. All in favor?
Aye.
Next resolution, appointing Jose Peña as court attendant on call, at a pay rate of $25 an hour. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hertzman, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Next resolution I have is confirming the September 1st, 2019, New Jersey Transit Daily Parking Fee Increase. Excuse me, something's in my eye. The daily parking fee for New Jersey Transit Rail Lot, which is currently $3, has not been increased over 10 years, whereas New Jersey Transit Rail Lot has advised the village that it intends to increase the fee for daily parking to $4 effective September 1st, 2019. Therefore, be further resolved, the board of trustees confirms the September 1st, 2019, NJT Transit Daily Parking Fee Increase to $4, and authorizes the signage in the parking lot to be updated to reflect the requested fee increase. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Gerard, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any further discussion?
Yeah, who's responsible for the signage changing?
The village.
At our cost, then?
Yes.
Do we get a piece of this?
That's reimbursed, do we get a piece of the...
In other words, it sounds like New Jersey Transit is setting the rate, so who collects the money?
We collect the money, and there's a breakdown, a scheduled breakdown of allocated costs and charges that we charge out to NJT, and they reimburse us at the end of the year.
I see.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next resolution approving the suffering Chamber of Commerce Fall Street Fair to be held Sunday, September 15th. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Sorry, trustee Albert, motion, second?
Hagan.
Hagan, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next, I need a motion approving the annual Neighborhood Lexington Avenue Block Party, Saturday, August 31st, between the hours of 4:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m., with a rain date of Sunday, September 1st. Do I have a motion?
Is that where Drew Simon lives? He can't change.
I don't know.
Mr. Simon, do you live on Lexington Avenue?
No, he's on your toe.
Are you going to that party?
I... I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion, trustee Hagan, second?
Second.
Trustee Gerard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Does anyone else have any question, comments, or concerns before we adjourn this meeting? God, he's looking at me. Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, that's right. At this time, we're going to make a motion to go into an executive session to seek legal advice.
From the village attorney.
From the village attorney.
One quick thing, this flyer?
Yes.
Is this like a PDF that we could post on the village website?
We probably will be doing that. We're going to make the notifications.
Yeah, sure.
So do I have a motion to go into an executive session?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Hertzman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There will be, just for the information, there will be no action taken. Okay, motion to adjourn a regular village board meeting.
Motion.
Trustee Albert, second?
Second.
Anybody else have anything to say? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, 9:32.